Okay, this is President Sells. I'm calling the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Thursday, March 19, 2020. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Sells.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Jesus.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you very much. This is President Sells. We'll commence with the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. For obvious reasons that I'm sure everyone is familiar with, we are conducting this meeting tonight electronically. This is due to the ongoing public health emergency and it is based on the authority provided by Executive Order 2020-07 that was issued on March 16, 2020 by Governor Pritzker that gave us the authority to conduct the meeting in this manner. We have, previous to this meeting, we did request public comment from our residents. We have received some public comment that will be read this evening at the appropriate agenda item. So with that having been said, we will bypass the public comment and move on to reports of village officers. First up is my report. I think it's pretty self-evident what we are all living through in these very difficult times. I've been greatly encouraged by the camaraderie and good spirit and an outpouring of love and support that our village has shown for one another as we're working through really what is uncharted territory. I want to especially thank our village staff that's being led admirably by Manager Francis in doing the best that they can to provide the services our residents deserve in these very trying conditions. And especially, I want to thank our Fire Chief Matt Buckley who has been well ahead of the curve on this crisis from its onset. I think our residents can rest assured that the village is up to date, that we have accurate information, and that we are following the protocols that we need to follow to keep everyone safe. Our public safety responders are fully ready for this crisis, but what they need from us is our cooperation because in order to prepare for this crisis, they have had to make changes in their protocols of how they respond to various types of emergencies. If you go to the village website, there is a dedicated COVID-19 page in which both Chief Buckley and Chief Weitzel have posted these updated protocols. I ask all residents to please familiarize yourself with those protocols and to assist our public safety responders if they are needed by you. They are trying to do everything they can to keep you safe, so please work with them and understand that that is their only concern. The other thing I would like just to mention is our greatest defense during this time is accurate information and a reasoned and calm response. What I have unfortunately been saying revolving things is that if anything is spreading faster than the virus, it's rumors. And we can all do our part in helping stop the spread of harmful rumors. So let's try to make sure that we all rely on either our own doctors or on trusted experts that are providing us the science and the data we need to make our day-to-day decisions. Our businesses are taking a hit, as we all know. We'll talk a little bit later this evening about some of the efforts that the village is making to assist where we can, but it really is up to all of us as residents to try to support our businesses in every way that we can. So if you are able to get that takeout, I encourage you to do it. And if you're able to afford a nice tip that can be spread among the waitstaff that right now are sitting at home waiting to come back to serve us all, that would be a nice take as well. So let's continue to work together and to take care of one another. I ask that we all make a special effort to check in on our senior citizens to make sure that they are getting the support that they need. And I'm confident that if we continue the camaraderie and goodwill and if we hold the course that we're on right now, we will safely emerge from this storm once it has passed. So thank you to everyone, and let's continue to work together as the wonderful community that we are. And that's all I have. Manager Francis?
Thank you, President Sells. My report will be brief. Over the past several days, the village has been diligently posting updates to our COVID-19 page on the village website. Today, we posted information related to Riverside businesses and resident assistance services that are currently available. The Village of Riverside will suspend water shut-offs until May 1, 2020, and will not assess any additional late fees as of March 17, 2020 until May 1, 2020. We want to emphasize that residents need to maintain their health and also practice good hygiene, washing hands, cleaning frequently used surfaces, and social distancing. I also want to remind parents that children should also practice social distancing, which can be difficult. Parks and Recreation is providing activity ideas for children to do at home during this difficult time. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Manager Francis. We'll move on now to the approval of consent agenda. I'm going to ask Manager Francis to please read through the agenda for this evening.
Certainly. I just want to note that on Item D, the Finance Department report was inadvertently listed and it is not included in the consent agenda, so when reading the consent agenda, I will be omitting that item. Item A, approve voucher list of bills, March 19, 2020. B, approve Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting Minutes of March 5, 2020. C, review and file Economic Development Commission Meeting Minutes, January 9, 2020, and February 13, 2020. D, review and file Community Development Police and Fire Department February 2020 Monthly Reports. E, a resolution authorizing issuance of commission cards for Brookfield Zoo and auxiliary police officers. F, an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to vehicle licenses. G, an ordinance amending Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 28 Municipal Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to the Municipal Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax. H, a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. I, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $267,841.99 with RNOW Inc. for the purchase of a 2020 Schwartz Regenerative Air Street Sweeper. A, a resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and authorize and execute a sales agreement with Westfield Ford Lagrange, Illinois for the purchase of a 2020 Ford SUV police package vehicle not to exceed $37,716.
Thank you, Manager Francis. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Gallegos makes such a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second, please. Trustee Pollak, second. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters. Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening?
Trustee Jesus, I have one President Sells, just as a reminder, the Parks and Rec Department is closed to the public. Staff is still working on future programming and posting recreation opportunities on their Facebook page. And Ron Malkeyody is available via email or phone if residents need to reach out to him with questions.
Thank you very much. Any other liaison reports? Trustee Evans, did you have something you wanted to share concerning the census?
Yes, I do. I have a census report for you. Riversideers have started receiving their invitations for census participation. And from what I'm hearing, Riversideers on the south side of town have received their invitations and in some cases have received reminder postcards already. I took a small suburb of the household on the north side, and many are still waiting on invitations. Hopefully, they'll get theirs in the mail tomorrow or early next week. You can complete the census without an invitation by going to my2020census.gov. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we've done a great deal of outreach to encourage participation in the census, including social media, direct outreach at community group meetings, banners hung around town, both in English and Spanish. We've built partnerships with community leaders and given them communication requests to share census messages with their various audiences. We have a direct mailing going out to each Riverside address. We've hung posters in local businesses. President Sells wrote a letter to the editor. And soon to be shared, we have a ridiculously cute video on counting Riverside kids featuring central schoolchildren. Emmett and Hannah Scheiman, Dr. Freitas, RBHS Principal also has agreed to be featured in a video about the census. We'll be making two videos with him, one in Spanish and one in English. The timing on that is more uncertain, so with the pandemic. I do want to thank Dr. Freitas and the Scheiman family and the TV Commission for their efforts in making those happen. I also want to thank village staff for their tremendous support during the process. And finally, I want to remind residents again that census participation is vitally important. Information gathered will be used to determine each state's congressional representation and distribute billions in federal funds to local schools and governments. The census is a count of residents, not citizenship. Data collected is confidential, highly secure, and by law cannot be shared with immigration or law enforcement agencies or affect government benefits. Illinois will lose $14,000 or $1,400 per year for every person who isn't counted, so we need every Riversideer counted. And if anyone has any questions about the census, you can email me at tevins@riversideil.us.
Thank you, Trustee Evans. And Trustee Evans, as usual, is being modest. Really, it has been Trustee Evans and Village Clerk Haley who have been doing the majority of work behind the scenes and trying to push out information about the census, and we owe them a great debt of gratitude. And just to reiterate what Trustee Evans has said, in the next day, there is going to be a video that is ridiculously cute with Hannah and Emmett, so watch for a notification about that. And if this doesn't go viral, I don't know what possibly would go viral because it's awesome and wonderful. Any other liaison reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside in regard to the village president's authority to declare a state of emergency pursuant to 65 ILCS 511116. Attorney Mars.
Thank you, President Sells. The first thing I want to make clear is that this ordinance does not actually declare an emergency. What it is doing is codifying the state law, the authority under state law for the president in appropriate circumstances to declare an emergency and the procedures by which that would happen. So it's important to have this in your code. You know, the current circumstances have kind of brought home how quickly things can change, and in a true emergency where the board is not able to convene, the ability of the village president to declare an emergency and kind of assume the powers of the board on a temporary basis is an important one. And the final thing I wanted to note is that if a state of emergency is declared by the village president, by law, it expires no later than the adjournment of the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Mars. Before we have discussion, I'd ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Trustee Gallegos makes a motion to approve the ordinance.
And a second, please.
Trustee Evans, a second.
Thank you. Let me just make one comment concerning this. To reiterate what Attorney Mars was just saying, this ordinance does not declare an emergency, and at this point, I have no intention of declaring an emergency. What I would really like to emphasize to our residents is that the purpose of this is primarily administrative, and it goes in particular to finance issues. For example, if we needed to make an emergency purchase that was in excess of the purchasing authority that our village manager has, and for some reason, the board was unable to meet, it would allow the village president to authorize that kind of expenditure. So it has more to do with kind of the bureaucratic and administrative workings of the village and less to do with trying to make some statement about an existing condition within the village. So with that, I would turn it over. Are there any other comments concerning this ordinance?
This is Trustee Hannan. I have a couple of questions. First of all, opening comment. You know, I commend you guys for putting this together. I think it shows a lot of foresight and proactive problem solving. Sort of two questions I have are both in Section 2E. Attorney Mars mentioned that the emergency order ends on the later of the adjournment of the first meeting. Why did we pick adjournment as opposed to the call to order of the meeting?
Because that's how the state law is phrased, and we're reflecting state law.
Okay. It's good enough for me. That's it. Thanks.
Did you have another question, Mr. Hannan?
No, it was related to that, so it's following state law is always a good answer for me.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing none, no further comments. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
We move now on to Items B and C, which are two items that we have dealt with in the past with regard to gravel driveways. And I would, given the circumstances of this call, I would ask for a motion to table both Items B and C to our first meeting in June.
Trustee Gallegos makes that motion.
Second, please.
Trustee Pollak, second.
And just to be clear, that specific date is June 4.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Item D, an ordinance approving an expansion... Excuse me, just a second. I lost my agenda on my computer. Hazards of Technology. An ordinance approving an expansion of an existing special use permit and several variations to allow for a two-story classroom addition to the existing school Ames Elementary and related parking lot and playground improvements at 86 South Coat, 92 Repton, and 443 Loudon Road, Riverside by the Riverside School District 96. Director Apt.
Thank you, President Sells. Riverside School District D96 is proposing a two-story classroom addition on the north side of the existing building, as well as associated parking lot and playground improvements to Ames Elementary School and the adjacent properties they recently acquired on Repton and Loudon. The property is located in the R1A zoning district where schools are a special use. The proposed addition and associated parking lot and playground improvements also require several variations from the zoning code. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on these requests for the expansion of the existing special use and the variations at their meeting on March 11. The school has an existing special use. However, proposing to build an 8,000-square-foot addition on the north side of the building is considered an increase in the intensity of the existing use and requires special use approval. The proposed addition will be located on the north side of the building and built over part of the existing parking lot and part of the Loudon property that they acquired. The addition is two stories with a footprint of approximately 8,000 square feet. The addition will match the existing school, utilizing brick and matching the roof line, and its height will be 30 feet. The addition will contain a new multipurpose lunchroom, new library media center, two fifth-grade classrooms, and three early learner classrooms with bathrooms. The project also includes building a new parking lot and new playground areas. The existing parking lot will be removed and reconfigured and expanded to the east. The new parking lot will start on the west side in the same location as the existing parking lot and will extend onto the Loudon property that the school district acquired. The new parking lot will only be for parking, and new playground areas are proposed on the east side of the school on the former Repton property. The parking lot will contain 43 parking spaces, including two handicap parking spaces. It will have an opaque cedar fence along the west property line and a mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs along the east property line to screen the parking lot from the adjacent residences. They have provided permeable surfaces in the parking lot, as well as in the playground area, to offset the increase in hardscape surfaces. The parking lot will also provide some landscape parking lot islands. The variations that are sought include variations from the residential district bulk requirements, including the minimum setbacks, maximum building coverage, and maximum pervious surfaces; from the site management standards regarding refuse containers, which prohibits refuse containers from being located between a building and a street lot line; from the minimum drive aisle, requirements of the parking code, which requires one-way traffic aisles to be a minimum of 18 feet wide; from the minimum required off-street parking, which requires two parking spaces per classroom; from the perimeter parking lot landscaping requirements that requires a 10-foot perimeter landscape area around all parking lots, as well as shrubs to be planted at a 1 for every 3 feet of landscape aerial length ratio; and interior parking lot landscaping requirements, which require parking lots containing 20 or more parking spaces to provide interior parking lot islands at a rate of 1 for every 5 parking spaces, and that the islands must be a minimum of 144 square feet in area and have a minimum width of 8 feet. It also requires that each of these islands be planted with one shade tree. The proposed addition will encroach into the street yard from Loudon, as well as both required side yards. The parking lot will not provide the required off-street parking spaces of 46, providing only 43. The addition will cause the building to exceed the maximum building coverage of 30% and combined with the parking lot expansion will cause the impervious surfaces on the lot to exceed the maximum of 50%. Additionally, the parking lot will not meet the required setback areas, provide the required parking lot islands or the required perimeter landscaping. One drive aisle will not meet the minimum width of 18 feet. The dumpster enclosure, although setback from Loudon, is technically located in that required street yard, which is not allowed by the code. At the public hearing, the petitioners explained many of the site constraints that they had to work with while still meeting the needs of the school. They stated they tried to meet the code standards as best they could, or at least meet the intent of the code. In regards to the impervious surface coverage, the commission did have some questions about how much it had been reduced. The petitioners noted that with the use of permeable pavers and concrete and some changes to the playground areas, they are reducing the existing impervious surface area of the combined site from 64% to 62%. Staff noted that based on how our calculations are done, the use of permeable pavement does not count towards impervious surfaces, and therefore, the percentage is actually 52% rather than the 62% as noted by the petitioners. At the hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the expansion of the special use, as well as the variations from the setbacks, the parking requirements, the dumpster encroachment, and the landscaping requirements. By a unanimous vote of 4 to 0, they voted 4 to 0 to approve the variation from the building coverage and 3 to 1 on the variance for the impervious surface. They did make these recommendations with the following conditions, the first being that the building must comply with Title VI, Chapter VII, regarding radio amplification in certain buildings, to provide adequate radio coverage for public safety agencies within the building in addition; to provide yield signs at the intersections of South Coat with Nutall, as recommended by the Village Traffic Engineer and their memo dated February 5; approval of the engineering plans by the village engineer and MWRD; and approval of the Parkway Tree locations by the village forester. There are the findings of fact from the Planning and Zoning Commission in your packet, as well as the ordinance approving the special use and variations. Attorney Mars, if you could please make a note regarding what the vote has to be, since one of the recommendations was a 3 to 1 vote for me, please?
In the instance of one of the variations, it received a 3-1 vote under state law where a variation request does not receive four favorable votes from the Plan Commission. It requires a majority of four trustees to approve it, and in that case, the village president does not have a vote. So we would need four trustees voting in favor of the ordinance for this to be approved.
Thank you very much, Director Apt. We do have with us on the line tonight representatives of both District 96 and their architects and engineers, but before we get into discussion, first, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving an expansion of an existing special use and several variations to allow for a two-story classroom addition to the existing Ames Elementary School and associated parking lot and playground improvements at 86 South Coat Road, Riverside, Riverside School District 96.
Trustee Gallegos makes that motion.
A second, please.
Trustee Evans, I'll second.
Thank you very much. Before we turn it over to the trustees for questions and discussions, Village Clerk Haley, if I could ask you to please read the public comment that we received on this item?
Certainly, President Sells. Thank you. We did receive three emails regarding this matter. The first one is from Carrie Zaleski. Honorable village trustees and President Sells, I am writing to ask you to vote in favor of granting the variances to allow D96 Ames School District to build according to their proposed plans and follow the recommendation of the zoning board's approval to grant the full variance. The plan is well thought out, making every effort to be the most protective of the environment and surrounding neighbors' interests. Every variance is truly needed to make the Ames expansion a success. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to enhance District 96 and make Riverside an even more attractive place for young families to raise their kids. I respectfully ask for your vote in favor of the variances requested. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Carrie Zaleski. The second email is from, I apologize, I'm not sure how to pronounce this name, Austin Graham. Honorable village trustees and President Sells, I am writing in support and asking you to vote in favor of the zoning variances to allow D96 to build out Ames Elementary in accordance with the current proposed plans, which have been approved by the Riverside Zoning Commission last week. For years, it's been clear that the current facilities at Ames... For years, it's been clear that the current facilities at Ames, one, are inadequate to meet the needs of the growing community population, and, two, fail to meet modern education standards. Building out the facilities per the most current plans would correct those inadequacies. These plans are born of neighborhood family input sessions, D Ninety-Six Board meetings, and consultations with architects, engineers, traffic, environmental, and other specialists who know what they're doing in these types of situations. The collaborative work of these specialists with our community members has ensured that the current plans best address the community concerns in a way that minimally disrupts the neighborhood. As a current Ames family with students in the fourth, first, and soon-to-be kindergarten classes, I fully support these expansion plans. They improve an already great school in a top school district and support the educational needs of Ames families and Riverside as a community. I respectfully ask for your vote in favor of these variances requested. Best, Austin Graham. The final email is received from Susan Wolf. Dear Honorable Village Trustees and President Sells, I am writing in support of the Ames construction project and the requested variances. We have a first and third grader at Ames. Both boys participated in the early learner program through the years, so we've attended Hollywood, Blythe, and Ames Schools. We appreciate the puzzle District Ninety-Six has been faced with across the village, and in particular, at Ames. We believe District Ninety-Six and the team hired to develop and execute this expansion plan have made all good faith effort to stay very close within existing variances and respect the importance of these variances to our village. The final results will deliver a major improvement on the current look of the school and its impact on the village. The playground area is in dire straits, and the plans put forward will benefit all of the children in Riverside. We will experience a much better separation of parking and play, along with better traffic flow during high-traffic times. This is a matter of safety for all of our children, and it is a matter of economics, too. We need to move forward now to enhance our schools and ensure we stay competitive and attractive to young families to put roots in Riverside. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for all you are doing this week and always to ensure our village remains safe and healthy. We appreciate your dedication. All our best, Matt and Susan Wolf.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, trustees, I'll turn it over to you now. Does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns, things they'd like to say concerning this?
This is Trustee Gisa. I have one question with regard to the parking. Is it possible, can someone clarify the two handicap spots? Do we think that'll be enough for either employees or families that have a handicapped child or are handicapped themselves? And is it possible to increase that to three or four of the forty-three spots, or is that out of the code?
Director Apt, do you want to handle that, or would someone from Ninety-Six like to address it?
I can start. This is Director Apt. They are providing the minimum required by the State Accessibility Code, which for parking lots under fifty square feet require, or fifty spaces, requires two handicap accessible spaces. If they were to provide more, that would reduce the number of parking spaces that they are required to provide even further, because the width of a handicap space is essentially two regular spaces, so it would increase the size of the variation.
Mr. Gisa, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's my question, thank you.
Other comments or concerns, trustees?
This is Trustee Hannan. Based on President Sells' suggestion, went back and watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. I found two that discussed this issue, and just want to take a moment to commend the school district on making the changes, the adjustments that were made to address the specific concerns voiced by the commission. The only comment I have, you know, there was a concern expressed by Commissioner Pelletier on the impervious surface requirement, and the commissioners noted that, you know, there have been a number of instances where they struggled with, you know, was there a hardship for a variation for the required impervious surface? And I fortunately was on the board for one of those instances involving Saint Mary's, where, you know, officially or unofficially, looked at the existing noncompliance and felt that a reduction, even though it did not cross the fifty percent threshold, was beneficial. You know, I don't think, after listening to the discussion at Planning and Zoning, that the impervious surface issue is enough to prevent this from moving forward, but just, you know, would like further instruction from staff, since this seems to be a repeated issue that they decide to simply approve with much creativity in trying to find the hardship, if that's something that needs to be adjusted in the code, or find a solution where the Planning and Zoning Commission is not put in a situation that they need to struggle with. There's been a significant improvement to the impervious surface coverage, but not enough to get us below that fifty percent threshold.
Yeah, I guess Attorney Mars, if anyone could address that question, it would be you. You want to give it a shot?
Um, yeah, Sonia, didn't the Planning and Zoning Commission look at the impervious surface type of issues a while ago in terms of the broad village-wide impacts and how we wanted to handle it?
I think it was touched on a little bit as we were kind of working through some other issues, and it was the beginning of a discussion, but I don't necessarily know that a decision was made regarding that. Definitely, they wanted to take a look at ways to encourage reducing impervious surface and perhaps bonuses and things like that for choosing permeable materials, but that is something that staff does by not counting permeable hard surfaces towards an impervious surface coverage. So certainly, moving forward, looking at how we calculate impervious surface and perhaps at what ratio hardscape that's permeable is counted is something that we can look at in the future. Additionally, we can look at these types of uses, such as schools, which are non-residential uses, and perhaps have different requirements for impervious surface for them than you would have for a residential structure.
Sure. So this is Attorney Mars again. To Trustee Hannan's point, you're exactly right. If you see a commission struggling with the same issue repeatedly, it is something that merits, you know, a closer look from a code perspective. So we can talk about that further internally and what steps might be taken to address this situation in the future.
This is Trustee Pollock.
Go ahead, please.
I recall that issue with the, the issue was we had a residential zoning variation, and the property owner was significantly reducing the amount of impervious coverage, and that was kind of highlighted as the reason for granting the variation. And I had brought up the idea, well, that's not a, that shouldn't be a variation, that should be a text amendment. And so we had some discussions about amending the code to say that if you reduce the impervious surfaces, you know, if you're nonconforming and you reduce it by a certain percentage, that satisfies the code and doesn't require variation. And I believe the consensus was that that was not desirable, that we, that stormwater is such an issue in the village that we did not want to compromise on that code, and that was fine. And when I initially reviewed this particular variation, I had the same thing in mind, that, you know, I don't see how we can grant a variation of any sort for impervious surface when all it takes is additional dollars to put in permeable paver, so it becomes a financial hardship, which isn't a hardship under zoning. However, in this case, and I'd ask staff to correct me if I'm wrong, in this case, I believe that the school is providing stormwater detention that they are not otherwise required to provide. Is that correct?
That is correct. They are providing an, under the parking lot area, as well as under, under one of the playground areas, underground detention, water storage for large stormwater events. And so they are providing it at a rate that is greater than what MWRD is requiring.
Right, and so that was the only, the thing that I saw as unique to this situation, and would avoid setting a precedent for other variations unless, you know, if someone sought a variation to exceed the hard surface coverage requirement, that if they compensate that by providing stormwater detention, then maybe it would be considered, but otherwise, we'd be consistent in saying that you still have to meet the fifty percent. So I guess what I'm saying is that I think that the fact that they're meeting and exceeding the spirit of the code, which is to provide stormwater benefits, makes me comfortable with what the school district is asking for.
This is Attorney Mars.
Go ahead, Attorney Mars.
I just wanted to add, for what it's worth, there, I believe there was testimony in this particular instance, too, when pressed by commission members that due to the slope of some of the areas, the remaining paved areas, that, you know, it would be more form over substance to put permeable pavers there because the drainage, the water would just sheet off before it had a chance to seep through the pavers.
This is Trustee Hannan. And echoing Trustee Pollock's comments and the ones made by Attorney Mars, you know, there were steps taken to, again, force the water inward instead of outward, the additional drainage that was put in, but my concern is that those aren't items currently in the code to grant a variation. So we have a, you know, as Trustee Pollock said, the spirit of what the permeable surface requirements are supposed to be, but, you know, I think it may be looking into addressing that in the code, so we're not, you know, forcing the planning and zoning to find a grounds for a variation when, under the language of the code, none exists.
This is President Sells. Let me comment on this as well, because this was the, this was the only issue that I had coming in with this. And I have to say that I agreed with Commissioner Pelletier in her sentiment. However, it's also true that the District Ninety-Six and their architects have gone to considerable efforts in terms of storm management, stormwater management, detention facilities, and things like that, to try to satisfy what it is we're after with these pervious requirements. But I think, Trustee Hannan, what you're really pointing to is an ongoing struggle that we have repeatedly with regard to this notion of undue hardship. And I don't know that there is a magic solution to that. However, looking forward, and this would not apply to a residential setting, but one of the benefits of the planned unit development idea that we've been talking about is it would allow exactly that kind of determination to be made by the board, where it might not specifically meet a technical standard such as an undue hardship, but the benefit to the village outweighs that technical requirement. And I think this would be like a textbook example, because I agree, I thought, I thought that, you know, this has really been, this has really been a great example of how this process is supposed to work, and the cooperation between the Planning and Zoning Commission and District Ninety-Six, as they work together to try to get to a point where they could satisfy the spirit, if not maybe the absolute technical letter of the code. And I thought that everyone really worked hard in a good faith to get there, and I think that, and I think that they did get there. So, but unfortunately, Trustee Hannan, I think that this is going to be, this is just one of those things that are going to be ongoing until we find some way to get some more flexibility built into our code.
And President Sells, that was my, this is Trustee Hannan, that was my concern, not necessarily for this particular vote, where I agree with the prior comments, that they went above and beyond to address stormwater issues, which is in the spirit of the requirement for impervious service limitations. But I, you know, I would urge to view this on a going-forward matter, you know, what happens next time where we have somebody coming in that's reducing the impervious surface coverage, but not below the fifty percent, that does not do the extraordinary items that the school district did in this case.
This is President Sells. I agree with that. And the other thing that I think that we're going to need to look at going forward is how to actually count the various, the different kinds of pervious materials that we have out there, whether it's permeable pavers, or pervious concrete, or asphalt, or whatever. It doesn't make any sense to me to count those things as one-hundred percent pervious when they are not, because that is really kind of contrary to what we're trying to accomplish here. So staff has assured me that they're going to be looking at this, and we're going to try to find, and I think that's probably going to be product-specific, you know, depending on which product a particular developer wanted to use, but you're, I think you're exactly right, going forward, we're going to have to have some refinements to our code in this regard. Are there other comments from other trustees on this item? Last call. Okay, call the roll, please.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallios.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye. The motion carries, and to our friends who are on the line from District Ninety-Six and their consultants, I want to, I want to reiterate my thanks to you in working diligently with our Planning and Zoning Commission and with our staff. I think that we've all reached a very admirable solution to a very difficult situation, so thank you very, very much for what you, what you did.
If I'm allowed to unmute, this is Martha Ryan Toy, the superintendent from District Ninety-Six, and I just want to thank all of you for convening tonight, thanking for this careful consideration, and certainly thank you for the approval.
You're very welcome. Thank you for attending this evening, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on now to the next agenda item. People are leaving us, stand by. All right, we'll move on now to Agenda Item E, An Ordinance Authorizing of Temporary Emergency Liquor Licenses for Sale of Alcoholic Liquors by Existing Class C and Class E Liquor License Holders for Off-Premises Consumption by Pickup and/or Delivery. Attorney Mars.
Thank you, President Sells. So this is another item that builds on the recent crisis. We have Executive Order 2020-07 issued by the Governor on March sixteenth, which prohibited the onsite consumption of public food or beverages in most businesses through at least March thirtieth, and prohibited public and private gatherings of fifty people or more during the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So as a result of that, restaurants, bars, et cetera, have been struggling and looking for ways to kind of bridge the gap. And so some are very active in the takeout and delivery business, and shifting their focus to there while they're still able to. And so, not just in Riverside, but in other communities that we represent, some of them approach the villages, asking about the ability to deliver alcohol during this time. The village does have a kind of... The village does have a kind of an add-on license for delivery of alcohol already, and, but most of the businesses in town have what's called an on-premises license. So they don't, they're not able to sell alcohol in sealed containers for takeout or delivery. In looking at state law, we saw that the state really just looks at everyone as a general retailer category. There is a box, the applicant and the village check when they let them know what kind of license they have for on-premises sales or off-premises sales. And so what we've done here is propose that during the course of the prohibition on dine-in, that the local liquor commissioner be given the ability to deem the off-premises, sale of sealed liquor containers for off-premises takeout or delivery to be the equivalent of on-premises, because on-premises, which they're duly licensed for, is currently prohibited, and this was the alternative offered in the executive order. So what this ordinance does is kind of make that official, that the local liquor commissioner can, upon request of any of the applicants in town, allow for the remainder of the ban on on-premises dining, for the takeout and delivery of alcohol pursuant to certain limitations.
So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
Trustee Gallios makes such a motion.
A second please.
Trustee Peters.
Thank you. Any questions or comments concerning this?
Trustee Pollak.
Go ahead please.
Wondering, are there regulations, requirements for the delivery person who's delivering alcohol?
That's correct, so, the, we reference the takeout requirements, or the delivery requirements that are already in our code, which include that the delivery person must be BACIT-trained, meaning they've been trained in the sale of alcohol and checking IDs. They must be age 18 or older, just like for on-premises service. They need to get the signature of somebody over 21 at the place of delivery, and the alcohol has to be prepaid, there can't be exchanges of money at the site of delivery.
Very good, thank you. Other comments or questions?
I have a question. Did we confer with any businesses on whether this would be helpful? Did somebody ask for this? Or are we just, it's something we're doing just to make it an option?
Manager Francis, would you like to respond to that?
Certainly, we did receive a request from Choo Choo, and I believe initially, there were a couple of other restaurant owners that were interested. And we, once we have a confirmed list as to who is utilizing this as an additional option for their patrons, we will push it out on the village website.
Thank you.
And just, this is President Salz again, for those of who, that might not know this, the village president is the liquor commissioner, and it is my intention to grant this pickup and delivery option to all of the applicable restaurants in town. Unfortunately, we probably all got one of the emails today about that LaBarra has decided to close temporarily, but in the interim, we want to do everything we can to help our existing restaurants thrive, so I will be granting these requests, assuming that the board approves this. Other comments? Please call the roll.
President Salz, this is Attorney Mars, can I add one thing?
Of course.
One additional requirement that I recalled for delivery that I didn't specify is the fact that the delivery of alcohol has to be in conjunction with a food order as well.
Got that, okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
The motion carries. We have no considerations or new business this evening, we also have no executive session. But before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I would just like to reiterate, especially to all of those who might be listening this evening, to please stay updated on what's going on with the developing COVID-19 crisis, and by going to the, our webpage, that will give you an update on everything that your village is doing in response to this. Just today, we posted something with regard to village services that would be useful to everyone who's trying to get some things done with the village. So please go to that COVID-19 webpage at riverside-il.us. And once again, let's just continue to take care of one another. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Gallios makes such a motion.
A second.
Trustee Peters.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you everyone, stay safe. Good evening, the meeting is adjourned.